December the fifth at 6:30 PM. I ask that you please silence your cell phones and any other electronic devices. And please stand for the prayer by Father Dos from St. Mary's Catholic Church and the pledge by Councilman Elvin.
In the name of your Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. Thank you, Father, for your love and providence and blessings for all your people created by you in a special way of the city of Gaushet. Thank you, Father, for the year 2023 of last 11 months and the wonderful guidance and the success you have brought upon the city, the council, and the council. In glory of your name, we ask you that you continue to strengthen and guide the mayor, the councilmen, police, the first responders, the staff members, and your people, the beloved citizens of this city. As we have begun the festive season of Christmas, we ask you that you bring us the true joy. In a special way, we ask your blessings upon all the projects undertaken by the city and the council. May your spirit always lead us. As the mayor and the councilmen are gathered here with the city for the meeting today, we ask you, Father, that you stand as their teacher and guide. Jesus, the divine master, fill them with your wisdom. Let them be guided by your spirit, in the words of the gospel, in making right decisions for the people and the growth of this city of Gaushet. May you bring our joy and success in all our undertakings. We make this prayer in the name of Jesus, our Lord. Amen.
Amen. What's the name of the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Elvin, and thank you, Father Dos. That brings us to our agenda order of approval. Do we have any changes, Ms. Shantsey?
Yes, Mary, you should have it at your seat on the consent of the item number one on the minute page eighty-five to three. Councilman Don't wait, Elvin was absent.
Thank you, Ms. Shantsey. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda order of approval with changes to the minutes?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Gilat. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman College. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Councilman George, are you on the line?
Ah.
Okay. Thank you. That brings us to our announcements by Ms. Shantsey.
Yes, unfortunately, the announcements that appeared on the agenda have changed. We have moved our lights and landing up in the Rotary Christmas Parade from last Saturday because of the weather to this Saturday, and it looks like the weather again will not cooperate. So both of these events unfortunately are canceled. We are going to have the fireworks that are moving there to the Mardi Gras tailgate that the city is hosting, and we will move the carnival rides to the Easter egg hunt.
Thank you, Ms. Shantsey. That brings us to presentation agenda, and we do not have a presentation this evening. So that brings us to business agenda item number one. Authorization to enter into a professional services agreement with Seymour Engineering for work associated with the Fairway Boat Launch and Pier Project in Hickory Hills by Ms. Kim Soshe.
We're ready to get started, and this is due on to a contract with Seymour Engineering to get the design kind of thing ready. Based on council's comments, the first priority first that we're looking into is additional parking, and Seymour Engineering has been applied some property that may be suitable for that. So we're ready to get started. To remind everyone, this is $250,000 in title and stuff.
Thank you, Ms. Soshe. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number one? Do we have a motion by council to enter into a professional service agreement with Seymour Engineering for the work associated with the Fairway Boat Launch and Pier Project to Hickory Hills?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman College. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Elvin. Any discussion, starting with Councilman George?
No discussion.
Councilman Jackson?
No discussion.
Councilman Gilat?
No comment.
Councilman College?
No comment.
Councilman Anderson?
No comment.
Councilman Elvin?
No comment.
We have a motion by Councilman Gilat, a second by Councilman Elvin. All in favor?
Favor.
Flavor.
All in favor? Councilman George?
Favor and flavor.
Right.
It was. Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number two. Approval of change order number one to increase the contract amount for the Gochay Head Start Drainage Improvement Project by Ms. Kim Soshe.
Due to some changes in the quantities that were placed out in actual field, this contract increased by $22,409.35. The county is paying that cost. The city is only responsible for engineering costs. So that project is complete.
Thank you, Ms. Soshe. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number two? Do we have a motion to approve change order number one and pay application three for the Gochay Head Start Drainage Improvement Project?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman College. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gilat. Any discussion, starting with Councilman George?
No discussion.
Councilman Jackson?
No discussion.
Councilman Gilat?
Just have a question. Is this project going to improve the drainage that comes from the north side of the highway down in that area where that transmission shop is located?
No, sir. This is to take care of the erosion that was happening at the head start. It will help south of the highway to deal with the drainage to the north. It's a much bigger project, and we have to go upstream, increase a lot of pipe sizes, including possibly the pipes on the highway. But this is specifically to keep that playground from falling out of the head start.
I know that business is sitting on the lowest spot in Highway ninety, and the drainage in that particular area is just crazy.
Yeah, the county has actually taken some steps to move that forward. I think they got money through the Corps.
Have they?
Yes.
Well, that sounds good.
So they are. It's in the motions. This project has nothing to do with it.
Yeah. They just slower than us, aren't they?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Councilman Gilat?
Nothing.
Councilman College?
This one turned out really good, this project here, I want to thank Seymour Engineering and more than contracted and did the project there. It came out good, and Ron Fulman and the county are all satisfied with it also. So thank you very much.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman Elvin?
No discussion.
We have a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman George. All in favor? I mean Gordon Gilat, sorry. All in favor, Councilman George?
Yes.
Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number three. Approval of doctored claims. They've been provided to everybody on the website. They've been provided to the council. So that is the presentation by our clerk, Ms. Montgomery. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number three? Do we have a motion by council?
Make the motion. We approve the doctored claims provided that all entries there are on are true, correctly entered and not fraudulent.
We have a motion by Councilman College. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Elvin. Any discussion, starting with Councilman George?
I have no discussion.
Councilman Jackson?
No.
Councilman Gilat?
No comment.
Councilman College?
No comment.
Councilman Anderson?
No comment.
Councilman Elvin?
No comment.
We have a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman Elvin. All in favor? Councilman George?
Yes.
Motion carries. That brings us to our consent agenda. We approve those in one motion unless somebody requests or removes one. One is approval of minutes from recess council meeting held November twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three at 6:30 PM with the changes. Two, approval of the water and sewer adjustments for December twenty-twenty-three in the amount of $12,029.28. Three, authorization to accept a monetary donation from Gochay Pride, Inc. for the city of Gochay's lights and land yep on the bayou. Four, approval of change order number one with Gulf Coast Solutions for the Shepherd State Park RV Expansion Project. Five, authorization to advertise for bids for the Shepherd State Park Bathhouse and Laundry Facility Project. Anybody want to pull one?
I just got a question before we do it. For number three, being that this is dedicated to Gochay Lights and Land Yaps on the Bayou, being that it's being canceled, does this become moot or?
No.
Uh, no.
It's part of the donor.
Okay.
And the check said for licensing lamps on the check.
Okay, so it'll be reversed or be agreed upon to transfer to another?
Yes.
Okay, very good. That's all I have.
We have a, do we have a motion for consent agenda items one through five?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Gilat. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman College. All in favor? Councilman George?
Yes.
Motion carries. That brings us to our study agenda. First is discuss citizen comments. You have three minutes. You state your first and last name and your address. You come to the podium. Did you not, who's wanting to sign in? Are you wanting to sign in? You want me to sign you?
Yes, I can prove it. T R I T T. Appreciate it.
Your work.
Have you seconded or seconded?
Yes. Mr. Robert O'Dell. Just take your first and last name, and you got three minutes. And we will hold it up when you got one minute left. And at three minutes, don't keep talking because I will gavel you.
Robert O'Dell, I've been.
And you just look up here.
I represent Mr. Morton Wheeler, who's here to like to speak also. The matter that we're here on tonight is a building that is in Mr. Wheeler's neighbor's yard. It belongs to a gentleman named David Vindich who applied for building permit to build a large accessory structure, things over fourteen hundred square feet in 2018. The staff denied. He filed an appeal to deny the building permit to the Planning Commission, four to three. The Planning Commission approved his appeal, and the city council on four to three vote also appealed. That did not require a public notice to neighbors, so Mr. Wheeler and none of the other people who were here knew anything about what was going on until that city's massive accessory structure being constructed. Mr. Wheeler hired another attorney, wasn't me, to appeal that decision or to pursue it in Chancery Court, that the city did not have the authority to grant this building permit. Was trying in Chancery Court, and I, again, representing Mr. Wheeler, about 2019, on appeal. We appealed the denial of the, I mean, the approval of the building permit, which was also allowed by the Chancery Court. We proved that to Mississippi Supreme Court, and then 2022, Mississippi Supreme Court reversed and held that, well, the standard frequency for review of decisions by local governments on their zoning ordinance and perched the U D O was that the courts would not overturn them if the interpretation was fairly debatable. It was only where they were manifesting unreasonable that the court would overturn them. Nine to nothing, the Supreme Court decided that the decision of the city was manifesting unreasonable. The court also, and then reversed, and this went back to the Chancery Court. The Chancery Court abandoned the thing back to the city of Gochay, and since that time, this was granted back in February, I've been trying on behalf of my client to give a response to what the status was regarding the planning staff. This building is a massive, Mr. Wheeler has pictures of it, he will show. We would like, and what we request is that the city address the problem of this illegal structure and issue a notice of violation to the owner. And I've been asking what the status of that is, but just had not received a response. I've written a series of letters to Mr. Ankersen. I sent a letter recently to Mr. Ballack, I probably remember in October, asking about the status of this. There are other neighbors who are here also. I just want to, the character of this, I could not imagine this thing until I actually saw it. I only saw it within the last week. I had never seen it.
Your time's up, Mr. O'Dell. Thank you. Martin Wheeler. Mr. O'Dell, I will request that our city attorney contact you and the attorney who represented because it is a legal matter. So, Mr. Dennis, will you contact him tomorrow and get with it? Thank you.
But he's been trying to do that for about three years.
Mr. Wheeler, when you come here, you can state your first and last name.
What I just handed out.
Mr. Wheeler, you got to state your first and here, state your first and last name.
All right, my name's Martin Wheeler. I live at sixteen twelve Vine Vista Street in Gochay. And what I just handed you was something I wrote to the city seven years ago before the building was built. Now, Mr. Vindich wanted to build this building, but it was too big. So Scott Ankersen told him four times, no, you can't build a building that's too big. And then Ms. Nicholson, who used to work for the city, also said the same thing. So he didn't like that answer, so he appealed that he had a quadric judicial hearing, which will never happen again in the city of Gochay, because that's not your job. That's the court's job. And the Planning Commission voted four to three to allow him to build the illegal structure over what your planning director said and your economic director said. Like Paul said, do not do it. Torgerson was pulling the strings on that. So then it went to city council, and Ms. Nicholson and Scott Ankersen got in front of the city council and told you guys, no, he cannot build it because accessory structures exceed what's in the U D O. And you guys ignored that and voted four to three to allow him to do it. Anyway, all, everyone on the city council that night knew it was wrong. Every single person did. He still allowed it. Mr. College, you knew it was wrong.
I voted against it.
But when Mr. Gilat brought up the issue that, hey, we can't do this, we're going to get sued. He said, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it. You were at the foot of the bridge seven years ago, and we did. So what I'd like is just do what you would do to a citizen. You'd make them take the structure down, end it, scorch it, just bolt it together, take it down. It's causing damage to my property because of the roof size and the downspout is eroding my backyard, so now I have a big hole in my backyard. And basically, I've been ignored by the city for seven years. I don't know how I had the patience. It's not my character to be this patient. And it's not my character to stop either.
Well, thank you for coming.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Billy Booth, fourteen oh five, Hill Creek Street. I'll begin with sadness of three former Gochay High School students that was in the asset on today, so we wanted to really commend, commit our condolences to Watson family and praying for the Watkins and the Richmond family, three former children of Gochay. So we praying for them in that situation. But I'm here again to make it known that November the seventh, Councilman Anderson said he was going to personally contact me and talk to me about the racial Facebook post that was seen on a page attributed to him. I have reached out to Councilman Anderson to set a meeting because he may have known that he did not want to talk in the city council. But as of today, he is yet to reply back to the date and time. Just wanted to tell them to know that singly Councilman Anderson is still delaying, denying, and don't want to talk or show his proof, quote unquote, proof that he has concerning racial Facebook posts.
Thank you, Mr. Booth, for coming. And as Mr. Booth stated, please continue to pray for our youth in our community because it is, it happened this morning, and I think we should all just keep them all, anybody involved and their family in our thoughts and prayers. Mr. Richard Jackson.
Not me. They get us mixed up a lot.
There you got me again. Richard L. Jackson, forty-five, forty-eight, Ellis Street, Martha County, Mississippi, First Vice President of the Jackson County Branch of the N O A C P. Good afternoon, Ms. Anderson.
Good afternoon, Ms. Jackson.
Long time since I saw you face to face.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Anderson, about five or six months ago, you and I exchanged phone conversations and text messages, and you said you were going to get the information too. However, that hadn't happened, and I realize you've been sick, you've had surgeries, you had a whole lot of other things to happen. However, my thing is to try to get to the bottom of the alleged hacking or the alleged comments that have enraged a particular minority of people. What I wanted to do was try to put this to an end because you got a great board, you got a great city, and the city is moving forward with a lot of great press as opposed to a lot of other cities that I've been to. And you and I, I think we tend to get along. There is no bad blood between Councilman Anderson and myself, as you agree.
Right, sir. Yes, sir.
So in saying that, I would hope that we could find some kind of way to bring this to an end because the great governor of Alabama, George Watson, remember him? See, one time he said up there, he said that he was against integration today, integration tomorrow, integration next week. But guess what he did?
Changed it too, didn't he?
Yes, he did. Changed it too. And University of Alabama is a better place today for him. I think the city of Gochay, the Mississippi Gulf Coast, would be a better place if, if nothing else, if we could just find a way to just make a statement to say that the alleged person, whether you did it or not, was wrong. And in that way, it would start some healing because guess what's going to happen in about four more months? Those same young people are going to be back. And the behavior that they displayed last year, I've already missed that ahead to make sure it doesn't happen again, and that was wrong. And let me just say this final thing. You got grandchildren. You know what I fight? I fight anything that's wrong against anybody. So twenty years from now, fifteen years from now, if I'm here, discrimination, if they were to be discriminated against, guess who would be defending it? I would. And I would want that to be just as fair for them twenty years from now as I would for those young people from last April. If that's all right with you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. That brings Mr. Charles Moore.
My name is Charles Moore, and I live at nineteen twenty West Gate Parkway, Gochay, Mississippi. I'm still on Council House in Ward Court to resign the way that truly had about African American, it shouldn't ever have, it shouldn't ever, shouldn't be on this board right now. He should go ahead and let, resign and let it be over with. And another thing I want to say to, Gochay and West Gate Parkway, we had water everywhere all day, other than when it poured down rain. I mean, water's all on the street. We need to do something about the drainage. We need lights down the parkway, and we need these young kids to stop driving so fast. I'm telling you, they'd be hard to tell coming out, going to school. I'm telling you, then I ran over the man, my neighbor Mel Bob, then I hit two or three trees, then I turned the car over, and all of them. So they running, hey, at least seven miles per hour coming up through there.
Going over all the monument signs?
Yeah.
Twice?
Yes.
Three times?
So a lot of things, we got a problem in West Gate. We need to address at least some of the expensive drainage and its speed. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Chief Dever, will you request that be looked into? Ms. Shantsey with the chief? And Ms. Shantsey, will you get with the public works director and H two O and work with him on his drainage? Thank you, Mr. Moore. They'll be in contact with you.
My name is Leonard Frederick. I live at sixteen oh five Garden Lane, Gochay.
Who dat?
I'm right across the bayou from Mr. Wheeler. He's my neighbor, so is Mr. Vindich. And this, what the comments I have concern to the building. My first comment is I challenge all of you to go down to the end of Vine Vista and just look at what I call Trump Tower. Because if you look at it, you'll get a different perspective than just hearing us talk about it here in this room. It's huge. In fact, I think it violates even the code after it was put up. I think you have a twenty-five foot height in it, and counting the buildup you put for the foundation, it's at least thirty-three, thirty-four feet tall. But it's huge. I challenge all of you to go down there and just look at it. You will not believe it. And yet, we were not given the opportunity to say anything about, we think it fits in the neighborhood, we think it's okay, we think it's not okay. We weren't notified. The first thing we saw was a eighteen wheeler pull up, start to unload the steel. That's when we first heard it. Now, that was back in, what, twenty sixteen, I think? That's sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, seven years ago. Now, I know politicians have a great propensity of kicking the can down the road, but we kicked that can from Seattle, Washington, all the way down to Key West, Florida. It's time to do something about it. It's going to bring down the property value of the immediate people around there, in my opinion. We tried to bring that up in court. You had a good lawyer. Wouldn't let them bring it up in court. I've heard time to time again, oh, we can't talk about it, it's still in litigation. No, it's not litigation. It went to the Chantry Court, to the Court of Appeals, to the Supreme Court of State of Mississippi, backed down, one minute, back down, and now it's come back to you. Let's do something about it. You can't kick this can down anymore. But I do challenge you, you would not believe. I mean, that building doesn't even fit in the neighborhood. It's, this supposed to be a single dwelling residential zone. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Ken Truitt.
My name's Ken Truitt. I live five zero five, Deerfield Drive, on West Gate. Been there about forty-five years, okay? There's a ditch that runs north-south, starts about at the dollar store, and it runs down to the bayou, okay? And it runs by the, well, it runs between my house on the back end, the nursing home, to give you an idea, and it runs north-south upon the West Gate Parkway where the water back. where the water backs up at, and all the way down to Sioux Valley, okay? That ditch, uh, has growth in that ditch and, uh, they have cleaned, uh, uh, ditch area from apartment running east-west, but they stopped. And it's supposed to been a road, Braggate was supposed to run all the way out to Goche Van Clay Road. If you look on the map, city map, uh, there's a road that runs all the way down, but it don't, okay? Uh, anyway, that ditch, it's got growth in it. Uh, I've been there forty-five years and I would say that ditch's been cleaned out on the back end. It's been cleaned out maybe three times, okay? The ditch that runs down beside my house, where water, water runs into the ditch on the back end, uh, it's probably cleaned out once a year. I've got it there myself to clean it out. It's concrete.
That's the concrete ditch, right?
Yeah, drainage ditch, yeah. Uh, all the water in Westgate on that back end of Braggate, uh, Heritage, it runs three different directions to that concrete ditch to the back. All right, that back ditch backs up at Westgate. But we had a problem at where the roads caving in. It backs up there, and I think the reason why it backs up because you got all that growth and, uh, and all that dead, uh, undergrowth or whatever, it piles up down there. And, and, and so, uh, uh, I think the guy was gonna have a contract one time to clean the ditch out and, and he got scared because he said he killed about ten mugs alongside the fence of apartment. And so he also said he bit on their backside. Their backside is bad. I remember one time they cleaned the backside out and you had all the utilities running underground and they tore up some, um, phone cables, all them phones, um, headphones and all that. And, and you know, electrical and all that is underground now. So they got to be careful to clean it out. Reason why people want to go back there and clean it out. But it's something needs to be done about. I've killed snakes. I've killed snakes. Go turtles back over the fence and then-
You're absolutely correct. The ditch needs some serious looking at.
That's about all I got to say.
Uh, time is for sure. Thank you.
I did report it one time. It's been many years ago. And it got cleaned a little bit, but it's to the point now it really needs a thorough cleaning.
Thank you. Councilman George, we're on to the council. We're on to council comments. Councilman George?
I have no comments.
Thank you. Councilman Jackson?
Yes. I just want to thank, um, everybody for coming out. And, um, also a special thanks out to the, uh, to the president of the NAACP, Reverend Booth and Charles Moore for your support and, um, uh, pushing this city forward of inclusive, of being, um, respected as a human being in this community and moving forward in our community instead of being stagnant. Um, this is, this is a city that we all grew up in. Me and Reverend Booth, we both grew up here. We born and raised here. Um, we, I would like to see this city in representation of the human beings that are here and of human beings that are also coming. We also have a growth in, uh, Hispanic community. Uh, we want the same respect, uh, for them as human beings, as anybody else. Uh, we want the, to know that they, they are loved and cared for and respected as a people as they come to our city. Um, so with that being said, um, I just, you know, just want to, um, give my respects to those that are fighting for what is right, uh, for the community and for the respect. Um, what else do I have? Just happy holidays. Hope everything, everybody had, enjoy theirselves and have a blessed holidays. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Councilman Gilat?
No comments at this time.
Councilman College?
I don't have any comments.
Councilman Anderson?
Uh, yes. Mr. Moore stated that I had a bad attitude towards, I guess, assume minorities. He didn't say that. I was never been raised to, to have a bad attitude towards any minority or any race or any, any people. I wasn't raised that way and I do not have a bad attitude towards any group of people. I love everybody the same. I've always been that way. Mr. Jackson, I will contact you again. And, uh, if things kind of crazy right now, um, but I will contact you again. We'll get together and talk some more. Everybody, I wish everybody a joyous, uh, holiday season and a Merry Christmas if I'm not here for the next meeting before Christmas. I hope to be. That's all I got.
Thank you, Councilman Anderson. Councilman Elvin?
I want to thank all the city departments and employees for the work you do. You are the backbone of this city. We couldn't do it without you and I. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Elvin. I just want to thank our Goche High School administration, our middle school, our academy, and our three elementary and our, um, daycares we have in Goche. We have some great levers, um, that influence our young adults. And if you feel the need to adopt someone or be a part of mentor, I encourage you to be a part of our school system or our daycares because they need true people who care. Some of them have parents, but some of their parents are single and they work. And they just need somebody to tell them they love them and they can succeed. And I encourage you, if you feel the need, um, to be a part of that. I'm proud to say that our soccer team in the freezing cold beat Pascagoula last week. Um, our football team, they played hard in Laurel and Jones County, and you can't defeat the refs and the team, um, but they did a fine job. Our band, Mr. Moore, you know you were there. I couldn't speak the next day. Um, our band, they continue to win gold medals. Um, they are traveling tomorrow. I ask that you pray for them as some of them and their band parent, um, instructors, directors had denations for more competitions. But they had a beautiful Christmas ceremony last night at the Performing Arts Center in Pascagoula and they did a fantastic job. So our youth, this, all of them. Our Pee-wee league, thanks to Trustee Bilbo, our recreation director and her staff over here to my left. Trustee, raise your hand. They did a great job. We won some Super Bowl games in Ocean Springs and their stuff was dedicated and I spent all afternoon with them. Just seeing our youth have fun and succeed in a safe environment is important. And I think we should be proud of it and I think we should go sell it because if we don't sell it, then we won't have it. So kudos to everybody involved. Also, if you're a senior citizen, I do not know anybody. We're all twenty-one in here. But if you do fit the need of the senior citizen age, I want to thank the council for, um, joining in and us furnishing the Christmas lunch that the city staff, um, has, will prepare. Trustee and her staff will cook. And they, um, have organized a wonderful Christmas luncheon at the Goche Senior Center at the George Martin City Park on December the thirteenth at eleven-thirty. So I encourage you to go be a part of a great group of people fellowship in, um, in our community. Once again, as Mr. Booth said, I ask that you please keep the families and your thoughts and prayers and their medical staff that are still working on them and their friends. And that's all I have. I hope you all have a Merry Christmas if I don't see you at our next board meeting, um, and a Happy New Year. Also, kudos to our police department. Um, they, we had an incident happen last night in our city and the person, the suspect is in custody. Um, and we thank our police department chief for all y'all's hard work. I also now would like to request that we go into executive session. Um, closed session to see if we need to go into executive session. Ms. Chancey, Ms. Montgomery, Ms. Denos, y'all have any comments before we do that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So at this time, we're gonna go, we need a motion to go into closed session. You make it, Councilman Gilat?
I make a motion to go into closed session to determine if we need to go into executive session.
Motion by Councilman Gilat. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Anderson. All in favor? Councilman George?
Got it.
Motion carries. So, right, Mr. Denos said come to the door and let you know if we're going-